We're starting to move towards an agenda. It's primarily an opportunity for some informational work back and forth, but also a little bit of an attempt to identify some possible synergies that where the two cities could benefit from working together. Was invited to speak at the Senior Center Lunch, which was enjoyable. Got an opportunity to fill that group in on what we as a council and as a city are up to, including Monmouth engaged in our upcoming construction projects, including the amphitheater. And there's a building we're going to be adding on to. Oh yeah, the Senior Center. So that was a really nice opportunity to talk with them. I have been invited by a student from Western to become a restee for a fundraiser. For an opportunity to, for this group to go to Ghana and work with, and this is a hearing impaired student, to work with a couple of hearing impaired schools in Ghana. So I'm debating that one, but I'm leaning towards going ahead with that. I did sit down with David Genovia from the Theater Department at Western. He put on a Shakespeare play this summer outdoors on the Linewand Stage. And he has an interest going forward in trying to build this out into something more significant. And more than anything, he wanted to talk with me about, you know, the amphitheater and who was I where funding opportunities that might be available, et cetera. So it was a good opportunity to check in with David. I've obviously known him for a while since my wife is part of that department. And it was just a good opportunity to sit down and talk with him. And he's, you know, he's baby steps at this point, but he's really interested in trying to build a possible music theater festival for Monmouth and long-term independence for the summer. For the first time in my, closing in on nine years as mayor, I got a nice invitation from the president's office to Western's opening football game, home football game. And Manager McClure was there, the other mayor and the other manager was there, manager Minett was there, and the other, I think that was kind of it, and some spouses. Western started out slow. They couldn't move the ball at the beginning of the game, but by the end it was absolute stampede. They were quite impressive to watch. Good game, good team. And it was nice, a nice outreach by the president's office to invite community leaders to come in and enjoy that game. So glad to be there. The Little Greenhouse on the park, which has been the home to Winnipeg for a long time, is no longer the home to Winnipeg. It has been emptied of. It's Winnipeg contents, those have gone into storage for the time being. We're hashing about to figure out where we're headed next. We'll have a board meeting on Thursday to start to address that a little bit more. Last night was Traffic Safety Commission meeting, which meets quarterly. Next meeting will be December 7th. The big items that came up, one is there was a request from neighbors at Stadium and Jackson to consider with the new apartment complex going in there, with the narrowing of the street due to us adding the parking spaces where it used to be a no parking zone right next to Western's hammer throwing pit, to add a four-way stop there. And the Traffic Safety Commission's recommendation as well be to do so. We ought to hear about that in another, I guess, three to five weeks depending on which meeting Russ is able to bring that forward.
I'm sorry, you said Stadium and Jackson?
Stadium and Jackson. And, you know, there's, there's been an increase in pedestrian traffic there. There's been an increase in traffic in general with the narrowing of the street because of the additional parking. It's a little bit of a challenge to get around there, so that's why we were supportive of that.
And what are the timeframes, how big a gap part is there between the Traffic Safety Committees?
Quarterly.
Quarterly?
Yeah.
Have we looked into increasing the amount of those?
We never talked about that.
So we're bringing up?
If, I think if there's a need for a special meeting, that's always an option. Yeah. Russ is continuing to push on trying to get the flasher at Madrona and 99. ODOT has thus far been not real interested. I did have an opportunity at the Oregon Mayor's Association to talk to ODOT's number two, and he has put someone on this. Have yet to hear back. We will be at LOC next week in Ben, and we're liable to see an ODOT presence there, so I figured it might be another opportunity to check in on that one. And then finally, we did talk about the idea of shared lane markings for bikes and cars on Main Street. And Russ basically, I think, is supportive of that concept, but has requested that could we hold off unless there's a dire safety emergency. And the conclusion was that the biggest safety emergency is bikes on the sidewalks downtown, which this actually will help with by research of 45 to 65 percent reduction in bike on sidewalks. But it's not such a dire emergency that we need to jump on that right away. So that one's kind of been tabled for now, but it's still alive. And then finally, tomorrow is the State of the University address at Western, 10 o'clock in the, in Rice Auditorium, for which I will be there. And I'm sure that Darren and Marshall will probably be along, and if any of the rest there you'd like to join in, I'm sure you'd be welcome. Finally, two appointments to boards and commissions. Kathy Widmer is asked to be on the library board, and Diane Dalton, who is actually an Independence resident, has asked to join the Senior Center Board. We do have the ability to add a non-resident to our boards and commissions. And I think the idea is this would be a good not a citizen of Monmouth representative for all the not a citizen of Monmouth users of the Senior Center. So with that, I'd ask approval of those two appointments.
Okay, I put something on it. You know, I appreciate the offer of being from Independence to be on board. She is a person that is very involved with the senior citizen way of short period time. My one concern is that it is, the building is here, we do pay for all the utilities, we do pay for the management that's taking care of it there, and which, you know, and I realize she benefits from it, but I have a little bit of, I'm not, John Carey have a little bit of difference with being in Independence, you know. That's kind of, you know, if it was a shared facility, I would have any problem at all.
Yeah, and the message I got from John Royal was that he wondered about it, and when I let him know that it's within our code, he answered back to me that he was fine with it. So that was the interchange I had with him anyway. So if I could have a motion to approve those two applicants? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Have we been lacking the ability to fill that, that spot?
Sue, I'll ask you that. Is there a?
Is there anyone else trying to fill that spot?
Have we had a non-citizen member of the board in the past?
We have.
Okay.
Yes.
And it's empty right now?
But we do not have one.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Good.
I move approval of both.
Second.
Moved in seconded, in favor?
I oppose.
Okay, and we'll have those letters out to those two folks. And with that, I will turn to council reps to boards and commissions and ask Councilor Guthrie, what's up at the library board?
So unfortunately, I was not able to attend the last library meeting due to some work obligations with the new students coming in. However, I do want to highlight several events that are ongoing. For those in the community with young children, toddlers, and preschool age, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, they do at 10:15 in the morning Storytime. So it's an easy way to let somebody else entertain your kids for a little while. You can't just let them run amok, but at least you're not constantly making the kid voices when you're flipping the pages. And also on September, no, that's your favorite part, Justin. And then also on this upcoming Wednesday, the 23rd, they'll be showing the new Cinderella movie at 2:45 PM. So next week's a real nice week to get out and visit the library if you haven't been there recently.
Very good, thank you. Councilor Johnson, Historic Commission and Planning?
Well, Planning had a hearing, so I'm out of that. With the Historic Commission, we had a very good meeting. The new member came on board, Jen Mannion, which we appreciate. We need one more member on the Historic Committee. The sign that we saw here in June that we presented, the showing the historic sites, is that done now yet?
It'll be up soon. I've seen a schematic.
Yeah, anyhow, we're having, we'll go down there, do the sign, the permanent one, and it will be placed at the bed and breakfast, okay? That'll be the first signup. The only improvement, we'll do one at a time as we go. The apps is done now. You probably got the notice from, anyhow. And one thing that I really liked about it was, as Mark told us, that when you do the apps, you're gonna, when you bring it up, you can go from the old to the new.
It's new.
It'll be a phase in type deal. So if you look at the old picture, it'll come into what's now, that there, it's called a whole new. So that'll be part of the apps that's already on there.
Very good. So, and then? So a crossfade from one photo to the other?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then the other thing that will happen, we get the signup, then most Historic Committee people will go down there and have their picture taken in front of the sign, and we'll promote that. But anyhow, the apps is done, the signing is pretty much done, so we're rolling through all that stuff.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Councilor Schaefer, Parks?
Yeah, we, Parks met on September 9th, and we had a quorum, so that's great. We discussed, we hadn't had, we haven't had a meeting since, I believe, May, so we had quite a, quite a break before we had this meeting. So we discussed Parks' master plan and reviewed what has been completed, and surprisingly, a lot of it's been completed, a lot of it. And we discussed projected parkland needs, so what are we looking at in terms of needs in the future? Do we need to acquire land? Do we need to develop parks on land that we already have? And we decided, or they talked, we talked about needing both, needing to acquire some land and needing to develop parks that we've designated as areas to develop parks. So Mark informed the board on the Main Street Park funding and groundbreaking set for the amphitheater, is looking like in November, end of October, November. What else? Eagle Scout project seems to be a common theme around here. We're having the plants being labeled in Madrona Park, and trail restoration through one, oh, and tree planting, which is going to be done by the Church of Latter Day Saints. Oh, I'm sorry, Church of Latter Day Saints will be doing bark, laying bark in the Geno Wentz Park, and I believe the dog park too as well? Yes. And apparently there is also a new kiosk at the park, the dog park, and, which was also another Eagle Scout project. And I believe there are lame bark dust at the Senior Center as well?
That was all this Saturday that was done.
Okay, so thank you for getting all that done. That was the day of service, sir.
Yeah, that was the national day of service.
Fantastic. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, sir. Are there any community announcements? Hearing now, I will turn to the City Commissioner for his report.
Thank you. Just a couple things. Our bond refunding that we did, that's officially done. Everything transacted okay and came in the right space. It's always good when the money comes in to pay off the other ones at the same time. That's helpful. So, theoretically, that can not happen sometimes. So ours is all clean, everything's taken care of, so we got that. The amphitheater project, we're on the kind of pre-construction process, had an initial meeting with them, they're working on their permits, and probably right around like October 1st they'll really move in and start, start construction on that. And there'll probably be a house out of the way by then.
October 1st?
Yeah.
Really? So we're gonna have, not have the groundbreaking though until the end of October?
We'll, dates are still all in flux.
Yeah, we were trying to figure out where they were before we did anything.
Yeah, very good.
We'll get back to you.
The house should be out there in a couple of days.
Yeah, the house is, they lifted up.
The house goes Sunday, is that right?
Something else.
That's what one of the workers told me last week, that they were shooting for Sunday. Yeah. In the wee hours before anybody moved in.
No traffic.
Yeah, they're probably going to plant it away.
Probably take one as a small house. Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and then just one other item, the, one of the reservoirs up on Cupid's Knoll, we're actually repainting that right now. It was definitely very rusted and had issues, and so we're getting in there on the inside and outside to get that one.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
And with that, we'll turn to a presentation on the Monmouth Senior Center Expansion Project. Who gets to take the?
He wanted to go first. You guys, you want to go first?
If you can give us name and city for the record.
Yes. My name is Jack Hinkle, and I live in the great city of Monmouth. And good evening, members of the board, Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor. As President of the Friends of Monmouth Senior Center, I would like to thank the City of Monmouth and the City Council for their support, and for our center, and for our expansion product, project, I'm sorry. The center is a place where many people make their home away from home, do activities, get a nutritional meal, see places in Oregon, stay fit, yes, keep their minds active, and the list goes on and on. The Friends have been raising money now since 2003 for this project, and we've seen many dedicated people pass as we pushed on. We will not forget Howard Wilson, Warren Dorfler, and Mary McGuire as past presidents who worked so hard over these years. The $120,000 given by the City Budget Committee has helped us to complete the funding, as well as the four grants and the money raised by the Friends and our community. We live in a city that gives high regard to us elders but goodies. A population that for that we are grateful. Thank you again for your continued support for each and every day. I can't tell you from my own heart, I've been associated with this, with this center now for some 12 years, having moved from, I'm sorry, California, and.
That's okay, you chose the right place to say it.
We did.
You're absolutely right. We moved up here to visit a friend, has been a friend since grammar school. He drove us around, I'm deadly serious when I say this, drove us through the college and everything. That was on a Sunday. Monday, we put our house up for sale. And we're here. We're ensconced. We love it. We thank you. We thank Sue. We thank everybody sitting in this room for what you have all done for us. You're a treasure. Thank you.
As are you, sir.
My name is Kelly Cape, and I am the Vice President of the Advisory Board. Monmouth Senior Center Advisory Board would like to thank the Monmouth City Council for the continued support of the center and also for the support of the expansion project. Mark Fancy has done an outstanding job throughout the process and believed we couldn't have done it without his expertise. Many senior citizen, many senior centers in the state of Oregon are not acknowledged by the city government, and we are very fortunate that the City of Monmouth sees us as an asset to the community. We're looking forward to seeing this expansion completed so that we can find new ways to meet the needs of the seniors in the community and surrounding areas. I've only been on the board for a year, and it's been quite a learning experience in learning how to work with this team of people. And I want to say that there was many, many people in front of me that have dedicated hours and hours and hours to this expansion project. And I wish I knew them by name, and I do not, but what they have done in getting this done has just been amazing. And the effort that this council has given also to support us in this endeavor has been absolutely fantastic. And I'm looking forward to seeing these things, these changes, and just moving on and going forward. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, man.
You want to go talk with them?
Here's my claim.
Excuse me, I would like to say Pat Olson would have been here tonight, but he is ill, and he was very sorry that he could not be here to talk with you. What I would like to say is, you know, you've heard about our project for a long time, but yet maybe you don't know how it's going to be an asset to the Senior Center. So I've kind of gone through a few things to let you know what this project is going to do for the Senior Center and its members. It's going to give privacy for classes and meetings. It will give additional class and activity space. The main area can now accommodate more people. Multiple activities will be able to be going on at the same time. Our storage, it will give us more room in the rest of our building, so that as things are put in the storage, that will keep us from having to take part of our main room for that storage. Right now, for those, we did get rid of the pool table, but we still have all of our chairs stored on the one side, and as long as we do that, it's going to make our room smaller, so we're very thankful for the extra storage that we're going to have. Of course, no more waiting time for bathrooms. That's going to be a big plus. There'll be less cross noise. The, and for you, those, which I know you've all been there, the high ceiling in the main room, it's very hard for people to hear, especially that have hearing aids. And by putting some of the things that are going on in our main room into the smaller classrooms, that's going to allow people to be able to hear better and see better. It will be increasing personalized service. We can do more one-on-one. It will be freeing space up in the bathrooms. We do toenail clipping, and when they do that, she needs to use the restroom to change the water and sanitizing and everything. And when people are in there trying to use restroom, it's hard to do both, so that will free that up as well. We also will have private areas for meeting, and we won't need to juggle our, our space like we do now. And the volunteer hall, we use that a lot more than you probably would like for us to do, but it's very, very handy, and that was, that will take care of that. We have a health and wellness service that we want to expand into the larger rooms. Central Lions, they would like to hold a regular screening for hearing and sight, and they would like to use that room once a month. So we're, we are wanting to do that to allow that service, not only for the seniors, but for the community. And then it will also allow us more space for programs with Western Oregon University, the Extension Office, Northwest Senior Disability Services. We're, we're so excited about this space. We've got everything ready to go for fall and October, and we're about ready to put people on the ceiling, so we're, we can't wait for it to get finished. So I do want to thank you again for your willingness to fund the Senior Center on a regular basis. I know people are losing funding with their senior centers, and we are just very privileged and very honored that you look at the Senior Center as being an asset and for our community.
Thank you.
Any questions? Okay.
Sue, could you send that list through to me?
Sure, you can just have my copy.
I see fodder for a mayor's nose.
Okay.
Always looking for resources.
I get the big finish. So I've been working on this project for a while. Scott came to me at the end of 2007, when I'd been here about six months, and said, the seniors have applied for a block grant, can you give me a hand? And so here we are, eight years later. So we're in a good place now, we're ready to move forward. I want to give you a couple anecdotes from the past years. We kind of came into this last phase of this long process. We were about $120,000 short when we started the year. So I felt in my heart of hearts, I felt very confident we were going to get the money. We had put together so much of the background funding we needed, that I knew we were going to, we were going to get that. And I wanted to acknowledge specifically, when we got $30,000 from the Oregon Community Foundation, we knew we were there. That was the first one. That was followed by a grant for $25,000 from the Collins Foundation, $40,000 from the Meyer Trust, and $90,000 from the Ford Foundation. And in late June, we met with Isaac Reifenstein, I get his name. He's a consultant that works for both the Ford and the Meyer Trust. And he, as we met with him, we were nearing our funding goal, and we still had an $80,000 ask of the Meyer Trust and $90,000 from Ford. And I remember he asked casually in the course of conversation with our long meeting that day, what would you do if you had more money than you planned for? And he actually followed that up later. It was on the 4th of July, I came in that day just to check my email before the festivities started, and there was an email asking, what would you do if you had $50,000 more than you, you'd set out to have? And what a, what a thought. I was mentioning that to Sue tonight, to get that question. What would if you had more money? All this time of looking for, trying to get the right amount of money. So we made it. So where we go from here is I'm working to put the project out to bid with the goal of starting construction as soon as we can. I'm estimating construction at four to five months. I'm not a construction expert, so we're going to bring in a construction manager who I will meet with weekly. That manager will come in on a part-time basis, probably a couple days a week, to check the site and make sure everything's going well with the construction, and I will manage him. So we're hoping to get all that started here in the next few months and be ready next year. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about that. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Very exciting. Very good. Anybody else? Okay. Great, looking forward to seeing this one.
Hey, I'm, since I'm the oldest person here, I was here when we started the, the first senior citizen, and it did help on it, and it was built by the people of the community, not a contract. And I'm just saying, I think it's great. I've supported 100%. I still support it 100% in the expansion, so great job. I use it, and probably not as much as a lot of people, but I do come in and use it once in a while, and thanks for all your effort, pretty appreciate it.
They serve a lot of good lunch, right?
Yeah, I've been in those twice.
All right. Are there any citizen comments tonight? And hearing now, I will turn over to the business agenda, which consists of a single item tonight, and that is a request from our new food establishment to become a food and alcohol establishment. That would be Casa Burrito, where Big Town Hero was, and. What was it before, the Big Town Hero?
The Country's Best Uber.
All right. DUI.
There was another sandwich shop in there.
The original taco shop was in there, too. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am here again for the liquor license application for Casa Burrito. It's located at 564 Powell Street East. They've applied for a liquor license. The application is for full on-premises sales. The restaurant will serve a full Mexican cuisine along with hard alcoholic drinks, beer and wine. The applicant has experience as a business owner. Currently owns and operate the Tequila Grill in McMenville, Oregon. And the background investigation I conducted did not reveal any areas of concern. Going forward here, Casa Burrito is a new business with no previous history. The business location at 564 Powell Street East was previously Big Town Hero, which recently closed. The current owner remodeled the business to meet his business plan and needs. As previously mentioned, the owner, Miguel Garcia Negret, has experience as a business owner by way of the Tequila Grill in McMenville, Oregon, which he has owned and operated for the past four years. Mr. Garcia Negret stated he plans on using the Tequila Grill as the initial source of funding for his new business. Did not find anything negative in regards to his financial history by way of bankruptcies or repossessions, or his corporation, RBRK. He has listed families, travelers on Highway 99W, and college students as the type of client patrons they expect to cater to. During busy nights, they plan on staffing the business with 10 employees to include an onsite manager. He has stated they will not tolerate persons or employees using or possessing drugs, and also have security cameras at the business. Mr. Garcia Negret was arrested for DUI 2013, but has since completed a diversion program and has valid driving privileges. Discussion if needed?
Any questions, council? We have a proposed motion on the bottom of the staff report. Would you like to make that?
I move to send OLCC a recommendation in favor of approving a liquor license for Casa Burrito.
Seconded. Moved in seconded, and this can just be a hall of favor? Hall in favor. I oppose. Send that recommendation, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it. Sue, you came back. We think there's something you're al- We think there's something you would like to add to the record.
I forgot to invite you. We have, um, the boards have decided to have an open house on October 8th from 5:00 to 7:00. This is time of inviting everyone to come, um, the members, the community, the council, city workers, everybody, it, every, you know, everyone has just been so gracious and so supportive, and we just like to say thank you and let them know what's going on with the project now, and...
Very good.
So, we wanted to invite you, and we forgot to do that, so we apologize.
So, so I would suggest that you send out an email to, um, council, um, with that information, and we might be able to squeeze something into the utility bill that will arrive on October 1st, to let the community know about that, so, very good.
Facebook.
Facebook, you know, all the usual.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, um, so, we have a few other things to do tonight. We have, um, council comments first of all, but then we have a second session, an urban renewal agency, and work session. Um, I would propose that we take council comments, if there are any, and then move straight into the urban renewal agency meeting, and then to work session, and end up with the executive session at the end. Or no, yeah, I'm sorry, with no, with no crowd here, let's slip the executive session in ahead of work session. So, I'll, let me first ask for council comments, if there are any tonight, Royal.
I wanna, I wanna put this out, and I wanna thank the police department for parking a police car out front, so people know that the police department is open. It's also, it shows people that they're, they're out looking and things are going on, and would like to see that continue, at least be parked out there during the day, a car. Nobody knows what's in there, but everybody sure slows down a lot quicker when they see the car. And people are saying, now we know it's open, 'cause there's a police car there. I think it's a very good thing to continue on with, is a open representation of our area that I'm in, police station.
Okay, very good. Thanks. Yeah, another one?
Yes. Remember I asked, and I didn't see that notice on the traffic safety about a crosswalk at, uh, at now Casa Burrito?
Uh-huh.
And you said you would bring that up at the next traffic safety meeting? And I heard nothing about that.
I'm sorry.
But I would have sure liked to see if, didn't, I don't mean the blinking lights, I don't mean that, I mean just a, a, a crosswalk across the highway there.
Yeah, so, um, one of the things that we did hear about Royal is that ODOT will be coming in, in the summer of 17, and basically reconstructing 99 through Monmouth, um, starting at Hoffen Road all the way to the south edge of town. Um, we're gonna see some movement of curbs, both up and out in places. Um, and we actually have a request in right now with ODOT for a rapid rectangular flashing beacon for that intersection. And they have okey-dokeyed that, as far as I know, and why we aren't moving forward with it, I can't tell you.
Okay.
But that's one that I could talk to Russ about, or you could talk to Russ about, and, and it could be that ODOT is holding off until they're doing the big construction project. Um, I'm not sure.
But I, I didn't even see the, the signs, just the, the crossing marked.
Right.
You know, so people will stop.
Right.
To allow you to cross.
At every intersection, I mean, it happened to me again today, I mean, someone almost got hit at one of the intersections, and it's like, how long do we wait?
So, where were you?
Uh, I was at the one, um, I think it's, uh, where you turn left to go towards, uh, Muchos. Checking on the White Place Street, something. And, um, you know, I turn on the drone every day, and I live down there, and it's, it's borderline, I mean, it's...
No, I know.
And so, I, I, I've been on council for three years, and it's, all I've heard is, "ODOT is gonna do this, I'm gonna talk to ODOT, I'm gonna talk to ODOT." Someone's gotta step up and make, make their call and, and show us that it's happening.
Well, thus far, um, what I can tell you on that particular one, Jesse, is ODOT's answer is no. And so, if you want a final answer, their final answer is no, and we're not taking no for a final answer.
Okay.
So, when I say we're gonna continue talking to them, that's because we're trying to get a different answer from them than that. Um, as far as the church street crossing Royal, I apologize for forgetting to bring that up.
Well, I was, I'm waiting for the next...
Right, no, I, I missed that one. So, you know, if you have an item that you want on that agenda, Chief is the lead staffer on that, Russ will also take anything, and, uh, rather than trusting my increasingly, uh, Swiss cheese memory, you might just fire something off to Chief or Russ. Can ask that that one be up on the next one. Uh, you know, we've had visits in the past from an ODOT rep, and maybe we could specifically ask for a visit, uh, for that December meeting, the traffic safety. Anything else? That, you ate your list, right?
That was it.
Okay, Steve?
So, I wanted to follow up a little bit on what Counselor Johnson talked about with the walking tour app.
Uh-huh.
Um, for those of you who have an Android, you can go to Google Play and look for the Monmouth Historic Walking Tour and get the app on your phone or your tablet. Um, if you're, uh, an iPhone person, you can go to the iTunes.
That's true.
And, and search for the app there, they're on both platforms. Uh, they're really fun to, to experiment around with, you don't even have to be walking the neighborhoods, but if you walk the neighborhoods, it'll help you figure out where you are and what houses are around you, and then, um, there's details about the house, the history of the house, there's not just a picture, um, but there's a lot of information, um, besides just helping you navigate around, it really gives you a history of the community. So, it's, it's a really exciting app for the city to have, so, um, hope you guys find it, get it on your phones, get it on your tablets. Share it with your friends from out of town, so they know where to go when they come to town.
If only I had a phone that's smart, Steve.
Oh.
So, one of these days. Um, anybody else with anything for council comments? Okay, um, so, I have the script for the executive session, I will read that. Um, I would propose that we then move straight into urban renewal, and, uh, then adjourn from that to the executive session, and then back to open session for the, the work sessions. So, uh, executive session script, the city council and urban renewal agency will now meet in joint executive session for the purpose of discussing real property transactions. The executive session is held per cent at ORS 192.6602E, Real Property Transactions, which allows the council to meet in executive session. Representatives of the news media and designated staff or other persons shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience, there are none, um, shall be allowed, uh, I'm sorry, are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back in the room, and it's not anticipated that any action will be taken this evening after returning from executive session. And with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting until after the urban renewal agency meeting. Tell who? In favor.
Aye.
Opposed. And with that, I would like to call an order, the Monmouth Urban Renewal Agency Meeting for Tuesday, September 15th, and note that everyone who was here for the council meeting is still here, except now they are all Mr. Whoever, instead of Counselor Whoever, and ask if there are any citizen comments, and hearing none. The consent calendar consists of the minutes from the urban renewal agency meeting of August 4th. If I could have a motion to approve those minutes.
So, moved?
Seconded. Moved and seconded, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And our single business agenda item is the Warren Main Street Sidewalk Project, and Mr. Manager Guy.
Thank you. Yeah, the, uh, purpose of that is to actually consider a deferral of the sidewalk project. This is a project when we did all our prioritization, we had some longer-term ones, it was like, hey, let's actually get something that is visible. It's the block right across from City Hall, it has the banner racks and the, coming soon, food cart, when it gets opened. Um, we actually did all the design, mapped everything out, um, true to form, it came in a little bit higher than we expected on, on some of the costs, but I think the, the key thing with the project is we're, we're really pushing that fund, like we talked, we're really pushing that fund hard. Um, we could accommodate this project, but then you'd have, you know, not much contingency left. The other one that, that more out there relevant is the amphitheater project, which that we're moving forward on, which is already tight on contingency. We would much prefer to have some extra money available if something does need to be adjusted on that project. So, we have proposed to actually move this project to next year. Um, with the load that Public Works has, they would love to not have another project managed, so that actually is a help for them too right now. So, it's so...
They're just procrastinating this project, they're still gonna have to do it.
Oh, they are.
Is there potential for some serious construction happening on that same corner, that we'd hate to put in a new sidewalk and have it damaged and have to have it repaired anyway, whether by us or them, it just seems counterproductive until there's...
Yeah, I think, not much, you, you can manage, you can manage sites, and the fact is, if you're doing something really major, you break something, you just put it back, it's not a big deal. I, I'd hate to see us defer for five years, just because something might happen on that lot. Uh, the one-year deferral makes a lot of sense.
Now, if there was an announcement that something was happening next, that might be different.
Right, okay.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? So, uh, your recommendation is to defer to 1617?
Right.
If I have a motion along those lines?
I'll propose, I approve the deferral of the Warren Main Street Sidewalk Project to fiscal year 6, 2016-17.
And is there a second?
Second?
Moved and seconded, in favor?
That was a motion to approve?
Yes, it was.
Yeah, it's worded a little oddly, but...
Yeah, that's how it'll be reflected.
He moves, he moves to approve the furl. And it's been seconded. He approves it, but he is also moved to approve.
Yes.
So, moved and seconded, and this can just be all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so, delay that project. And with that, unless you have anything else, Scott? Okay, I would ask a motion to adjourn back to city council for, uh, an executive session.
So moved?
In favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, uh, urban renewal is...